For everybody joining, I just wanted to let them know if you're a member of the public, your name will be changed to participant with a number behind you. So if you see that changing, that's why we're changing everyone's name to a generic name for tonight's meeting. And Mayor, we are live.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you for the staff for putting this together. And we will be our first meeting. We'll go ahead and see how we do. This is going to allow folks, obviously, to go ahead and stay at home and try to be safe. But it also is going to allow us to participate and continue on important things. Before we call the meeting to order, as you folks may know, on March 17th of 2020, the governor issued an executive order N 2920 suspending certain provisions of the Ralph M. Brown Act in order to allow for local legislative bodies to conduct their meetings by some of these means that you're seeing right now. So with this being our first, let us call the meeting to order. And may I please have roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Davis? One moment. One moment. She was, we're going to unmute all of our council members.
Thank you. I'm here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Mayor Medina?
Here.
Thank you.
Now, what we've had an opportunity is for folks who have already emailed in to the city clerk to have those public comments read for items that are not on the agenda this evening. And there also may be some that do want to participate. And that will be coordinated through the city clerk. So Melissa, if you'd go ahead.
Yes, just one moment. So we received three public comments from members of the public to be read into the record for tonight. And as you can see on the screen, they will be read as they were received by the public. The first one is from Ken Abara. Mayor and council, I would like to make a request for future consideration. Please consider refraining from scheduling special meetings or city events on the first and third Tuesdays of the month. I make this request on behalf of the San Bruno Lions Club, who have been meeting on the first and third Tuesday of most months for nearly 78 years. As a member of the San Bruno City Council for 22 years, I do not recall a special meeting or event on the first and third Tuesdays. Tonight, as you read this, the San Bruno Lions are conducting an online meeting on the regular scheduled time and day and discussing the same issue you will be discussing regarding city net services to needy families. If there was not a conflict of the two meetings, we would be able to equally engage both meetings. Thank you for the consideration, Ken Abara, that was received today at 2:21 PM. The next public comment comes from Stephen Seymour. Hello, today I was told by a neighbor that many SB employees have been sent home and will receive full pay for two months. Thank you for sending all nonessential employees home and helping to stall the spread of COVID-19. It's very important to keep people's pay continuing if we hope to come out of this pandemic the best way possible. My question is, are SB emergency funds paying SB employees while they aren't working? Or are they receiving unemployment benefits set aside by our federal government? Thank you for your response, Stephen Seymour. That came in today, April 7th at 4:49 PM. Next is from Sandra Perez Vargas. Hello, city council, the state of California has deemed cannabis dispensaries as essential during this pandemic. Will San Bruno take the steps necessary to bring one to our town so we don't have to take our business and tax dollars to San Francisco, Pacifica, Redwood City, or other cities in the Bay? Three of you are running for reelection, Mayor Medina, Laura Davis, and Mike Salazar, voted to ban all cannabis businesses from San Bruno. Do you not see the medicinal benefits 70% of the residents of California voted to legalize years ago? Do you not see how we are losing tax dollars to other cities in a time where we need them? Have you changed your views on this issue? Or do you plan to run for reelection while denying the community a legal product that many use today? Maybe even more important today. That message was received at April 7th at 5:49 PM. And I do want to note that is the end of the emailed public comments for this portion of the agenda.
Thank you. So now we'll move into those that are on Zoom. If they, you do wish to have the comment or statement, something that's not on the agenda for up to three minutes, you can go ahead and raise your hand and then it'll be facilitated through the city clerk.
And the way, just for members of the public, if you're in the meeting, the way that you raise your hand is on your screen, you should see three dots. And you should have an indication for raise your hand when you click on those three dots. At this time, I'm seeing none.
Let's see, one hand else, Laura. I just scanned through and I do not see any as well.
Mayor Medina?
Laura, you wanted to speak under public comment?
No, I just wanted to clarify that the email from Sandra Salazar Perez came in at 5:01.
I'm sorry, 5:01.
Forwarded, and so for some reason, so I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we'll go ahead and move off public comment and move on to conduct of business. Melissa?
For tonight's conduct of business item?
I apologize. Vice Mayor Salazar, did you have something you wanted to say?
Sorry, we're trying to unmute him. It looks like there's a delay in the unmute process.
Thank you. Yeah, I couldn't unmute myself. I said I was muted by the, so I just wanted to ask if there were any call-in people that didn't have a computer connection for the raiser process of calling.
We do have one member of the public who has called in. For that member of the public, you can press star nine to raise your hand if you would like to speak.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing a hand.
Okay.
Double checking and I do not see a hand either. Okay. So now we will move on to, probably anything, we'll move on to conduct of business. Melissa?
Item 4A, adopt a resolution authorizing a program to provide internet access for San Bruno families to support distance learning for pre-K children, pre-K to 12 children in need and appropriate $7,000 from the Emergency Disaster Fund to help fund the effort.
Okay, thank you. And who's going to take lead?
That would be City Manager Grogan.
City Manager?
All right. As I share my screen, one second. All right. So good afternoon, members of the city council and the public. Welcome to our very first remote, fully remote council meeting. So it's my pleasure to present the item tonight that is revolving internet access for families in need to support distance learning. Also present virtually is Sandeep Kishnamurthy, the Director of San Bruno City Net Services Department, and he will be available to respond to any questions. And so why don't I begin? So our agenda for the presentation is I'll provide a background on the item. We'll talk a little bit about the proposed program. We'll talk a lot about the funding partnership and collaboration and then be available for any questions that the city council may have. So first, why don't I start with the background? So as we all know, there was a shelter in place order that was announced on March 16th to take effect at 4:01 Tuesday, March 17th. That order initially went through March 17th through April 7th. I called for social distancing, the closure of all nonessential businesses, and it suspended all on-campus learning, not just for primary school, but all educational institutions, including colleges. And what that really did, as we all know, it sort of launched an immediate need for our primary schools to develop distance learning and online resources in order to continue education. And what a number of our school districts made clear was that school was not canceled. On-campus learning was canceled. And it was, it's a fairly significant undertaking to set up distance learning. And we'll talk a little bit about that. I think, as we all know, again, on March 26th, the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tony Thurman, recommended that schools prepare for distance learning through the rest of the, of the school year. On March 31st, the shelter in place order was extended until May 3rd. And just today, we had a countywide suspension of all learning, of all on-campus learning for all 23 public school districts in the county through the end of this current fiscal year. That order was also, a similar order was issued in a total of five counties in the Bay Area today. And so that press release went out shortly afternoon today. But connected with the shelter in place order and this immediate need for distance learning, a partnership was established, really led by the San Bruno Education, Educational Foundation, which really saw the need for distance learning and wanted to help, not only help school districts, but help families that didn't have internet access. And so sort of a five-way partnership struck up over the last month between the Educational Foundation, the San Bruno Park School District, the San Bruno Community Foundation, the Samatail Union High School District for our very own Cappuccino High School in the city. That partnership really got a boost by a $60,000 contribution from YouTube to support distance learning and tools. And what that's funding is it's funding professional development for teachers in the San Bruno Park School District, as well as funding equipment, Chromebooks and wireless hotspots for students that may need it. As the city of San Bruno joined the partnership, one of the things that we realized is that we're really uniquely positioned to help provide home internet service. As the city council and the public knows, we run our own municipal telecommunications company, San Bruno City Net Services, that provides services to over 6,000 homes in the city. And when we looked at the population of kids that would likely need access to internet citywide, we came up with the number of 120 families. That was really developed by surveys that the San Bruno Park School District conducted along with the Samatail Union High School District conducted for families that reside in San Bruno. And we also included about a 20% factor on top of that, knowing that there may be some parochial or private school students that do not have home internet service. We know that all home internet will not be the solution for all families. A number of families may prefer a wireless hotspot. There may be split households, or there may be a reason why we're unable to connect the household with home internet. And so we did estimate about 50 families would need a wireless hotspot. So what we're really talking about is a total population of 170 families that do not currently have internet at home, that also have a pre-K to 12, a student through grades pre-K to 12 in their household. And so one of the first things we did, beginning last week, was develop this flyer that was put into a package that student, that middle school students at Parkside picked up. When they picked up their Chromebook on Friday, we wanted to give them a flyer that let them know that San Bruno City Net Services provides internet and give them contact information. As we were still developing this program, we wanted to make sure that that was in the packet. And approximately 90 families picked up a Chromebook on Friday. And when San Bruno Park School District comes out of their spring break, they're going to distribute additional Chromebooks to the elementary school students beginning on next Tuesday and Wednesday. So as we developed a plan to provide low-cost internet, we immediately looked at the current low-cost internet plan that is offered to the San Bruno community. We currently have 55 paid subscribers today to that plan. It is $1,295. It provides 10 MPS downstream and 5 MPBS upstream. And it has various income guidelines, and that was attached to the staff report. On this slide, I wanted to provide the income limit for households between two and five persons. The actual table goes up to eight. These income limits are actually higher than the federal student lunch guidelines that the school district uses. And so when we talk low income, we want to go by these guidelines. And we actually think that we'll be able to serve a broader swath of students because our current income guidelines are higher than what's used in the schools for the free and reduced lunch program. One of the things we initially wanted to do, not knowing how long kids would be using distance learning, we really wanted to see, okay, well, how long, how much would it cost to provide internet for a full year if we were able to do that? And so we know the monthly cost is $1,295. That equates to $155 a year to provide home internet. And we put together a program that in round numbers costs $32,000. And so that's $12,960 for the equipment that needs to be purchased. That is the modem that also acts as a wireless router. And then the annual service cost for 120 families at $18,000. And in looking toward ways to fund that, immediately we had a number of people step forward and raise their hand and say, hey, I'm willing to help. And so we were able to, in a really short amount of time, create a budget that fully funded that $32,000 program need, made of six entities. So the San Bruno Community Foundation, Leslie Hadamia, the executive director of the foundation, was a part of our team. She asked her board for a $10,000 contribution from her executive director funds. And so we received word just yesterday that that was approved. The San Bruno Lions stepped forward and donated $5,000 to the effort, as did Rotary, as did the San Bruno Police Association. And the city would contribute $7,000 to the effort. And that's why we're here today, to ask the city council to authorize $7,000 to come from the city's Emergency Disaster Fund to fully fund the internet cost for up to 120 families for one full year. And so this is the partnership. We're excited about it. I really want to thank Brian at the San Bruno Educational Foundation, Leslie Hadamia, Rebecca Prozan from YouTube, Google, and stepping forward with that $60,000 donation, as well as the Lions, Rotary, and the Police Association. This is a great thing. It's a great thing that we're uniquely positioned as a city to be able to create a program like this from whole cloth in just a matter of days. And we're here tonight to ask the city council for their support. We've worked out a number of logistics with the cable department on how to implement this. And I want to thank Sandeep for putting in the long hours to figure it out. As the city council knows, we are, we're doing everything we can do to avoid house calls now. And so we've created online tutorial videos to help with installs. We have, we are also outfitting two of our cable net employees with a full outfit of PPE, personal protective equipment, including a respirator, if they do need to go into a house and help out with the install. And so we feel confident that we will be able to support all the families that come forward and wish to take advantage of this wonderful program. And so with that, I want to conclude my presentation and turn it back to the city council. And the item that is before you is adopt a resolution authorizing a program to provide internet access for San Bruno families to support distance learning for children in grades pre-K to 12 and appropriate $7,000 from our Emergency Disaster Fund to join with the other partners for the effort. That concludes my presentation, and I will turn off the screen share and open for questions.
And then, city clerk, is there any comments that need to be read?
Got you unmuted.
Sorry about that. Sometimes it automatically mutes, and I'm one of them. So yes, we did receive several emailed comments that I will read into the record. And I will also share my screen so that everybody can see what those comments were. Just one moment here. Okay, the first comment that we have here, I will push that over. So the first comment that we have is from Alex Melendez. It says, Dear San Bruno City Council members, thank you for considering a program to provide internet access to 170 San Bruno families to support distance learning. If there is any bright side to this horrible crisis, it's how we look at inequities in society. Having watched San Mateo County Superintendent Nancy McGee's presentations to the Board of Supervisors, I have to commend her and our various school districts on moving toward an all distance, toward an all at-distance learning model. Currently, the Office of Education is working on many goals, some of which include supporting all students with an equity lens and supporting schools in delivering distance learning. You have the opportunity to help them fill the gap with access. I want to also thank YouTube for their grant to primarily assist at-distance learning and purchasing Chromebooks. Many low-income families, ESL students, and those facing computer literacy challenges are not in a position to receive the primary education they need. The combination of programs and assistance you can help contribute to tonight by approving this action would go a long way to providing equity in at-distance education. Please support the resolution. Thank you, Alex Melendez. That was received on April 6th at 9:48 PM. The next email?
AM.
From, I'm sorry?
9:48 AM.
9:48 AM, I'm sorry. From Arros Harmon. I applaud the council's, the council's efforts to provide internet access to all families in this time of crises. I would like to suggest that we consider going further and permanently instituting free internet service for extremely and very low-income families and subsidized access for low and moderate-income families. Phone companies have provided so-called lifeline access for many years. If a phone was the lifeline of the 20th century, surely the internet is the lifeline of the 21st. We also have programs to help poorer households with electric and water costs. We should think of internet access as a basic utility. Families should not be excluded from civic and social life or easy access to services because they can't afford the monopoly rates charged by companies like Comcast, AT&amp;T, and Verizon. With our municipal ISP, we have the opportunity to invest in making San Bruno a city where all households are connected to each other and to the world. This resolution is admirable, but we should see it as only the first step towards something even better. And that was from Arros Harmon, and it was received on April 6th, 2020, at 10:58 PM. The next slide is from Chris Gonzalez. It says, Melissa, I wish to comment on this. I am so proud of the Rotary Club of San Bruno for our collaboration with other clubs and organizations in the San Bruno community, for stepping up to help bridge an enormous gap for the underprivileged children in our community. Without the help of the city and organizations in the community, these children will not be able to keep up with their education. My grandson is in the second grade, did not have a laptop to participate in his new online classroom. My husband and I had the resources to provide that for him, but many people do not. I love the collaboration with the Rotary Club, other groups, and the city of San Bruno. We truly are the city with a heart. Chris Gonzalez, past president, Rotary Club of San Bruno. And that was received on April 7th at 12:38 PM. The next email came from Barbara Einsidel, and I apologize if I'm saying that wrong. It says, Hi, Melissa, I am the president of the Rotary of San Bruno. I wanted to let you know that our club is very excited to help with the remote learning project for the students of San Bruno while they are being sheltered in place and cannot attend school. This is a great way to give back to our community and to make sure that the future generation does not get left behind. It also is a great way to help the parents and other individuals who are in need of internet services. We are very proud to be part of the San Bruno community. Regards, Barbara Einsidel, President, Rotary of San Bruno. And that was received on April 7th at 1:16 PM. The next email, Honorable Mayor and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this item. I would like to ask the following questions for staff. One, please explain the reasoning for the program to be 12 months long. Two, will staff be expected to set up internet service, modem, router, et cetera, for the 120-plus families? Three, what does the $9.95 per month service cost entail? Is it a subscription cost? Does a portion pay for an outside provider? And how much of the cost lands in the Department General Fund account? Thank you, Ken Abara. And that was received on April 7th, 2020, at 2:30 PM. The next email. Good evening, Mayor Medina and council members and staff. I would like to provide a comment for tonight's city council meeting. I would like to thank our community partners, including YouTube, the Lions Club, the Rotary Club, the San Bruno Education Foundation, the Community Foundation, and also the city of San Bruno for working collaborative, collaboratively to help ensure all students have access to the necessary tools during these unprecedented times. While we have our shelter in place mandate, it is critical for all students to have internet access for the distance learning that is provided by our wonderful teachers and staff. Supplying the necessary tools for students is critical, especially during our current crisis, where the tools are necessary for the at-home learning model. Supplying laptops and internet access are essential. Thank you for your continued support. Sincerely, Terry Chavez, Trustee for San Bruno Park School District. This message was received on April 7th at 4:11 PM. The final email is, Hi, Melissa, will you please read this during public comment? The San Bruno Lions Club is very happy to help the children of San Bruno during this time of need. We will be contributing funds to the San Bruno Education Fund for the purchase of computers, internet access, and education slash certification for San Bruno teachers. Lion President John Giuseppeini. And that was received on April 7th at 4:41 PM. And that concludes the emailed presentations, emails.
Thank you. Now let's move, council, with your approval, let's move to see if we have anybody that has joined us this evening and if they want to raise their hands and feet on this topic.
And again, as a reminder for members of the public, if you wish to raise your hand, you should see three buttons on your screen. When you click on that, you should find, follow the path to raise your hand. That's the title of the feature. We'll give some time for that to happen. And if, for those calling, you can press star nine to raise your hand for us to see the little icon that indicates that you would like to speak.
To the chair, just a clarification, I actually had to select participants to then see a list of people who are participating, where then I can choose, raise my hand. So I'm not sure if that helps others that are struggling.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
What we can do is we can start to open it up with council. And then if I see a hand go up, then the city clerk can also help monitor that, then we can pause. And, but I'm not seeing any currently, but we want to also give enough time. So we're going to open it to the city council for questions or comments to staff.
To the chair, can any of the questions be asked that were in the emails from Ken Abara?
Yeah, there were three questions. One, City Manager, or Sandeep, sorry. Why is it 12 months? That's the first one.
Sure. There were three questions. The first was, why is it 12 months? It's 12 months because as we were working and brainstorming the need for internet, we wanted to provide as much support as we can. We all know that, we don't know how long we'll be under the shelter in place order. And we initially, initially thought, let's do three months. But once we really talked to the Educational Foundation and the Community Foundation, it was clear that there were the resources that could be brought to bear to provide 12 months' worth of internet pay for the families. And we thought that would be a good thing to do. The next question was?
Setting up, setting up this service?
Yeah, so the city will set up internet service, as I mentioned in the presentation. For all of our city net service calls, we are doing everything we can to avoid house calls. We will first attempt a self- Um, we will first attempt a self-install, and so we will drop off a self-install packet to the home of any participant in this program. Uh, and we will be available for phone support. Uh, and then we have created a, uh, two-step, uh, process to determine, um, uh, how to complete the install. Self-install is not successful and we cannot, um, help out through, um, uh, phone support. We will then see if there's any way, uh, we can install a wireless access point around the house. Uh, for example, if we can get access to, um, the crawl space, we could, uh, temporarily install a wireless router in the crawl space. Um, if we need to go into the home, uh, we have COVID-19 screening questions that will be asked. Uh, and then we have, uh, two of our city net employees that will be outfitted with, uh, Coverall, the respirator, uh, eye protection, and then enter the house, uh, to install, uh, one access point, uh, in the house. And so we do feel comfortable that, uh, between all of those methods that we will be, accomplish the install for all the, all the families that need it.
The $9.95 with that entails?
Right. So the $9.95 is the cost, uh, that we currently offer for our lowest, uh, tier of internet. Um, it is also, uh, combined with a 25% discount, uh, that is applied to the, um, city, the city net services bill of anyone that meets the eligibility criteria. I should also say by going through this program, uh, what it will also do is it will, um, allow anyone, uh, that meets the criteria to also, uh, receive 25% off their garbage rate, uh, as well as their water and sewer utility charges. And so it's a current existing program that's available right now. Uh, we currently have 25 people, or fif- I'm sorry, 55 people that are, um, that pay for the $9.95 a month service. Uh, this would be offering that same service, uh, uh, with, um, the internet paid for a year for all of the families, uh, that, uh, participate.
Okay. Thank you for doing, doing that. Um, I'm not seeing any hands, however, I am being told that there is, uh, Mr. Seymour, um, does, but we're not seeing the hand come up or the unmuting of the phone.
Mr. Seymour, if you could seal your name, what participant number are you, and then we can help unmute you?
How about number five? How about number five?
Okay.
Maybe?
I've unmuted participant five. Is that you, Mr. Seymour?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So, um, I, I, I wanted to talk about, so what I want to talk about is not about what we're talking about now. I tried to do the same thing in front end. Um, can I still speak?
Well, I'd like to have us on that topic. Uh, again, this is all new for us, but if we can get through this item and then, uh, I will commit to you that we'll go back and then, uh, get to here for you. Is that okay?
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so we're to, uh, council, those are the questions that Mr. Iberia had asked. Um, questions and comments from council.
I see the Vice Mayor Salazar has his hand up.
Michael.
Thank you. Uh, so I, um, I wonder if, um, a lot of the, the families that would qualify for this program are, uh, households where English is not a primary language. So I'm wondering if the materials that we're gonna put out will be available in other languages besides English? And if, um, we have staff that are able to, um, address, uh, technical questions, yeah, also in, in languages other than English?
Uh, so the answer, uh, is if anyone calls, uh, uh, and needs a Spanish translator, uh, we have someone available and we also have staff, uh, that speak other languages. And so there may be, uh, a time lag to get someone on the phone, but we, that is a part of our normal, uh, business operations, is to provide, uh, service in multiple languages.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. I think this is, uh, it's a great idea and, uh, I just wanted to thank staff for all the effort they've put into getting this role. And I know that, uh, there's a lot of things going on right now and this is, this is a great contribution to the community and we have the ability to do something that not a lot of other cities can. So I think this is a, it's a great program. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, two questions. The first one, what's the timeframe to get these families set up? Um, you know, we're in almost mid-April coming up and, uh, school, you know, 170 families, that seems like a huge undertaking for staff.
So, we're ready now. Um, 90 Chromebooks were passed out on Friday. Uh, we included a flyer in there. Um, and I know a number of people have called, uh, the city net department already. Um, and we are ready to serve, we are ready to serve them. Uh, we have modems on hand, uh, to begin issuing them, uh, and supporting the install. Uh, we also have a number of employees, uh, working remotely. Uh, our IT department was able to set up, uh, soft, uh, home systems on home computers. And so if someone calls, uh, the regular line, uh, they will get a staff maybe answering in their home, uh, but ready to serve.
Excellent customer service, 'cause I think if I called my cell phone company right now or my internet company, I'd be there for days waiting on hold. Um, my other question would be, so, you know, it's, it's, it's just so good to see our community come together and to receive the donations that we've received, and I commend everybody who participated in that program. But I, I bet you there's families at home that wanna do something, they wanna contribute in some way. And one of the things that, when you donate to something, you wanna make sure it's going to get some good use. So are there ways that maybe a community member might be interested in donating to support this program? Um, because I think our kids are important and we wanna make sure that they have the necessary tools to be able to be successful.
Absolutely. And so, uh, the best plug I could give for that is the San Bruno Education Foundation's website that has a current, um, open portal for donations. Uh, and in talking to the foundation, uh, this project has really crystallized that this is a need, uh, an ongoing need for families. And so, uh, they are certainly, uh, I know, uh, have a, has a commitment to supporting distance learning and supporting our kids. And so, um, on the San Bruno Educational Foundation, uh, Foundation's website is a, uh, portal for donations. So the community, um, should, uh, feel free to go there and, uh, donate if they desire.
Great, thank you so much.
Other questions or comments from council?
Yes.
Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you. Um, this is fantastic. You know, we have, we have a need out there for connecting our students and, um, the community getting together with our clubs. Um, it's a very proud moment, I believe, for San Bruno as we move forward, um, dealing with this crisis. Um, the question I have, um, just making, making sure, I thought I heard it, that this service is also offered to private schools in, uh, students in our community?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Um, and I wanted to remind our community that this is the benefit of having a locally-owned internet provider, city net services. Um, where if you're, I think AT&amp;T has, or is a Comcast, they'll give you two months free and then they start charging you whatever that rate is. I saw it from $9.95 to $24.95 a month with a contract. And in San Bruno, you don't need a contract. You call today, you're gonna get an appointment, you're gonna get people that know our area, they're gonna come and they're gonna hook you up. Um, so it's, uh, it's amazing that we actually have that and, and looking forward to seeing how we can get these students connected. Um, so we have a certain amount of budget and, and we all know how hard our budget is gonna be to, to meet in the future. Um, looking at possible ways for, for those families that they don't have a student in, in elementary school, you know, maybe they're just struggling, but they would like to have, um, that access. And currently, it's 12, $12.95 a month. And if we were able to get donations to work to provide that connection, we could, we could look at that. Um, but, uh, I, I wanted to echo, uh, Councilmember Davis's, uh, comment that, you know, how, how can we work together to, uh, to do more for those that are gonna have a very difficult time, um, during this crisis? It's, 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 it's almost overwhelming, but, um, and, and the San Bruno Education Foundation is one way of doing that, but for, let's say, some seniors that, that don't have the access or the available funds, um, maybe, uh, going forward, if we identify the funds, we can continue offering this service. Um, um, and I, and that's, that's all I have. I, um, I just wanted to thank staff and, uh, the service clubs, um, for, for stepping up. This is, this is, this is a fantastic way that, uh, our community's getting together. Thank you.
Councilmember Mason.
Hey, everybody. This is, uh, I wanna start by echoing, uh, Councilmember Medina's comment about, uh, the benefit of having a cable network that is local. Uh, I believe all of our council members are live tonight using San Bruno CityNet. Um, and for all those next-door posts, we are, everybody's TV's working, everybody's screens are working. It's actually quite exciting. Um, I wanted to just start by talking about what an unprecedented, um, night-to-night vote is because it's really the first time that I'm aware of that we have our two main, uh, nonprofits. Our San Bruno Education Foundation, that's connected to our school district. Our San Bruno Community Foundation, that's connected to our city. Um, and then our main, uh, service clubs, which are the Lions Club and the Rotary, who are all joining together to benefit our brilliant, most disenfranchised population, not just our low-income community, but our low-income children. So, um, I just think it's worth, uh, taking a moment to thank everybody for coming together because, um, it hasn't, I don't believe it's happened in this way before. And unfortunately, this, um, pandemic has really caused everybody to think about, uh, what, what our true needs are. And in San Bruno, we're very lucky that one of the biggest needs, um, uh, unlike other communities that have a number of needs, really has been our children and their access to education. So, um, while we look at this particular staff report, I think one of the questions that I have that has actually been raised on a couple of the social media sites is, um, to city manager Grogan, is are we creating something new or are we really plugging kids into something that we've already had? Um, that I think a lot of people just didn't know about.
Yeah, you know, I would say both of those are, are, are true. Uh, we are creating something new. Um, this partnership, uh, between the five entities is new. Uh, and, uh, there's an effort to provide, uh, Chromebooks, um, and wireless hotspots. Uh, and so the, uh, component that we are, um, uh, expanding is the low-cost internet that is currently available, uh, for a total of $12.95 to anyone that meets the criteria. We are providing that for, uh, at no cost for 12 months. And so it's, it's really both.
Great. So then that, does that also mean that if anybody's watching this, that may not have children in the district, um, but they may qualify for the low-income program? That they can look into that and still add an application?
Yes. Uh, and again, that provides, uh, 25% off all, uh, city net services, 25% off garbage rates, as well as 25% off, uh, water and sewer rates.
Great, thank you. Um, and then I had just one ask, which is, um, I think in just looking at the numbers that are on page four or five on the staff report, uh, the number is almost exact with a difference, um, of $400 between the total need, which was $31,608 and $32,000. Um, so what I, what I would like to do is ask the council to actually authorize our city manager to spend up to $13,000, not just $7,000, um, on this particular program, which would alleviate $5,000 in the case that that money is needed. And because we know that this is unprecedented, we know that distant learning is new, we're all figuring it out as we go. I would hate to have to have another meeting to come back to authorize the city manager to spend, um, more money. Um, and the reason I'm looking at the $13,000 is because that is the only item that will belong to the agency after this. The modems will be purchased and the property will still belong to the city of San Bruno. And so really as an investment to not just our youth, um, an investment in the city, um, I also wanted to say that this is really just an ask to say, hey, there's some flexibility here. The $5,000 would go, could go a long way. Um, and we don't know what's gonna come up in the next month. Uh, things are changing by the day. So with that said, um, I would like to request an amendment to the resolution and I hope that Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Salazar, Councilmember Medina, and Mayor Medina would support the authorization of the city manager to give him that flexibility, should anything else arise. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Comments from council? Okay, I also, uh, obviously, uh, we're all unanimous in the sense of, um, really excited for this opportunity to help the youth. Linda, you mentioned, uh, a lot of the, the groups, the, uh, service groups, uh, the various bodies also. I, I do wanna mention that the San Bruno Police Association also did contribute $5,000. So, uh, that was very gracious of them, uh, to step forward. Not only do they protect our community, but they're here to help our community, uh, when it comes to our youth. So I, I wanna acknowledge them as well. So, from, uh, what I've gotten from this, city manager, is obviously the materials and assistance will be available in Spanish. Yes, uh, from what Marty's question was, people can still sign up today for those opportunities uh, from the prior arrangement that maybe not everybody remembered when it was first rolled out, but that was something that was done. Uh, there was an ask, uh, from, uh, Linda, city manager. Do you have your hand up?
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to, uh, also point out that, uh, staff just told me that the flyer that went to kids provided in Spanish as well. So that initially went out in English and Spanish.
Thank you for the clarification. So going, uh, Michael.
I was just giving the manager a thumbs up. Thank you.
Okay. So, back to, to Linda, there was one ask and that was in regards to the city of San Bruno contribution, which is currently listed at $7,000 as the, uh, resolution. And she was asking for that to be raised to $13,000, which would be the cost of the equipment cost. So, uh, any comments or thoughts from my colleagues?
Uh, to the chair?
Michael.
Uh, just a, a question to the city manager. Uh, would, uh, the additional funding, uh, be useful? Do you anticipate that that could be used? Or, um, or, or a different amount? I, I know that, uh, we, we, um, we have to be careful with the funds that we do have available and that they likely will be, um, required in other areas. But, uh, would an additional, uh, $5,000, uh, could that potentially be used in a, in a different, uh, in a different way or in expanding the program?
Yeah. You, you know, given the need, um, and the importance of this project, uh, the additional $5,000, uh, spending authority, I don't see any, uh, harm coming from, from that. And should the need arise, or, um, should the need for additional modems be there, we can, uh, make that expenditure and not have to come back to council.
Um, and I'll just say, 'cause I'm not seeing that hand up by my other colleague just at this second. Um, if, if the resolution amendment is to up, offer the manager up to that, because again, I think things are evolving and we know that. I mean, what was last month, we would have not known this month. And, and unfortunately, the sadness of it is, um, we're not out of the woods yet. And we also have to be cautious and careful, and that's why we're here today and meeting in this forum. But I also wanna have it as an opportunity to really celebrate, right? Celebrate this community coming together from various levels and aspects of folks for something that we need for our community. And yes, having your own local entity is certainly something that shows what it can offer and what it can do. So, um, city manager, I'm hearing that, that, that's fine with you in that, in that element, unless I've, uh, misheard anything incorrect in my statement.
Kind of thumbs up.
Yeah, I don't know if it's on or off. Okay, Marty, okay, thank you, Marty.
It works.
So, um, at this time, is there any other questions, comments from the council?
I would just say, I think Linda should be ready to offer a motion.
Then keep in mind, this is a resolution. Please go forward.
Am I muted, everybody?
Uh, no, you're on now.
Okay, then I would motion to, uh, move this, uh, resolution forward with an amendment to authorize, uh, our city manager to spend up to $13,000.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
City clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Mason.
Yes.
Councilmember Medina. Councilmember Medina.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Yes.
Mayor Medina.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
As, as we all are unanimous and also the community is, uh, behind us and unanimous, uh, to help this worthy project. So thank you to all and thank you to staff and obviously all those that contributed, stepped up, uh, and in a short time, uh, made this, uh, available. And obviously is why we're meeting tonight, because we need to move forward and, and we don't want to wait till the 14th. So also I want to go back, uh, to my commitment to Mr. Seymour, participant number five. If he could be unmuted, and I think, uh, it might have been because your, your comment was read, we thought maybe, uh, maybe your public comment had been addressed or at least, uh, stated. So, uh, Mr. Seymour.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So first of all, I want to thank, uh, Councilmember, uh, Linda, um, for upping, uh, the original amount by $5,000, because I think we have a, a great need in this community, especially for those, uh, who have been sent home to learn, um, and don't have internet, uh, capabilities. So I want to thank you all, actually, for, uh, acting on this. It's, it's really important, um, to this community. And as a ro- a rotarian myself, I'm excited about the fact that we've helped that to happen. I'm also excited about the fact that the Lions and the San Bruno Police, um, and, uh, Ed Foundation and all of the others have done that. So thank you all very much for that. But I do have one question for you, uh, Mayor Medina. When, uh, people in the city have questions of you, um, and they would, uh, and they're seeking an answer, uh, because recently, um, I, uh, responded on behalf of some who were asking about, uh, testing in our city. Um, and, uh, I responded on the police site, um, looking for an answer from you. And, um, and, you know, it's, it's not, uh, unreasonable that I wouldn't get one, uh, because, you know, that may be, not be the right, uh, uh, place to ask for an answer, uh, from the mayor of our city. Uh, but how do people in San Bruno, um, ask a question of the mayor, um, and get a response?
Email directly, please.
Okay, and what about for those, uh, people in, I mean, those questions that are, uh, larger in, in scope? Um, because there are many in our city who would like to know where they can get testing. Um, uh, I'm seeing, uh, that I've got, uh, 139, 138, so I've got, uh, another minute. So, I mean, uh, testing is, is a, a, a large issue and we all know that testing, uh, is needed so that we know who is carrying, uh, the, uh, the virus. It's actually the best way that we can get back to work. Um, so where do we get, uh, answers like that from the mayor of our city? I mean, I, I, yes, I can, I can send you an email and I can get an answer from you. But what about the greater public who wants to also, uh, have an answer to that same question?
So the Samiteo County Health Department, it takes lead when it comes to county matter in this. They do have one site that is, uh, I was on a conference call and unfortunately they had 56 tests taken and they probably have a capacity of, um, um, 150 or even more than that. So, uh, keep in mind, it is also, and I'm taking up your time, Stephen, so.
Uh, you're taking up our city's time, but go ahead.
Stephen, why don't you go ahead and finish your, your comments?
I'm done, I'm done. Please, uh, respond.
So again, the, the, the county, uh, website is your primary idea and area for that. Also, if you go to our website, the, the city website as well.
All right, so.
Okay, Stephen.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
You're very welcome. I appreciate you being here, uh, with us, uh, this evening on our first, uh, attempt here. So thank you. Um, okay, with all of that, I, I want to circle back and thank my colleagues, thank the staff. Um, I also want to thank for, um, the resolution that was passed and the work that this community has shown itself, uh, as using our motto, the city with the heart. So with that, we'll go ahead and do an adjournment to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on April the 14th through 20th at 7:00 at the San Bruno Senior Center. Well, and it will not maybe be at the senior center, so we will be updated on that. And we'll see about, uh, how we progress for the 14th meeting. Uh, so again, uh, take care.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Marty?
Are we going to have council comments?
Uh, it's not on the agenda.
Great, I just noticed that.
Uh, can I wish my, can I wish my dad a happy birthday?
Absolutely, with no hes- we could pass another resolution.
All right, I just wanted to, I mean, it's, and for everybody else out there, it's so hard when you can't just go over to your parents' house, right? And it's so important that we, we stay at home as much as possible. So dad, happy birthday, we'll play this for you later, but I love you, take care, don't let anybody in the house, okay? Thank you, everybody.
And why don't we just say on behalf of the council, a happy birthday to Mr. Medina. Um, but, uh, again, folks, uh, thank you very much for everything. And again, um, we may be meeting on this venue again, so, uh, we will continue to improve. We have made progress and as was stated, having your local, uh, cable company makes a big difference. So again, we are adjourned, thank you, be safe, stay strong.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.